To this Tuesday, April the fourteenth, City Council meeting. I now call us to order. Um, we would now have a pledge of allegiance and an invocation should she pleases from Councilwoman Burge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A few words, Mr. Chair. This has been a difficult time for all of us. And I'd be remiss if I didn't call to our attention a couple of things. Number one, you know, we were raised in our family that if God gives you gifts, it's not because you're so special. It's to use for the benefit of others. In the Old Testament, it's called tikkun olam. That's what the Hebrew is. It means repair of the world. And as we've heard from Councilman Ledford, our police department, our fire department, our public works department, and many of us have been about repairing the world. It's not about our egos. It's not about our quote popularity. It's about doing for others. And may we continue to repair the world. The other thing that comes to mind is that probably the most important things in life are not things at all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the agenda.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Burge. Yes, now at this time, we will have the elections of officers for City Council year twenty 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 twenty-one. At this time, I would now take nominations from the floor. Are there any nominations from the floor?
There's some hands up there, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got Councilman Mitchell and Councilman Ledford.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start out by thanking Councilperson Burge. That was absolutely beautiful. And it was a wonderful, wonderful way to start the rest of our lives as well as this meeting. So I'd just like to say thank you for that. You're very, very heartfelt and inspirational to me. Um, I'd also, before I throw a nomination out there, like to thank you, Mr. Chair. You've done an excellent job. It's been my pleasure working with you. And I'll continue to work with you just in a little different way. And with that, I would like to place a nomination for the Chair, Councilman, or Vice Chair, Councilman Chip Henderson.
Okay, we have a nomination on the floor from Councilman Jerry Mitchell for uh, current Vice Chairman Henderson as the next Chair. It's been duly seconded by Darren Ledford. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? I now ask for a motion to close the nominations with one say ad name.
I move.
Okay, it's been moved. And properly seconded. Thank you, Councilwoman Burge. Okay, let's do a roll call vote on the nomination of Councilman Chip Henderson for Chair.
Okay, um, may I ask the question?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, will he vote in the, at this time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll see, yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman Oglesby?
Yes.
All right, there's nine yeses.
Okay, uh, now, uh, we, I'd like to congratulate, uh, former Vice Chairman, now Chairman Chip Henderson. You are, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you in your new role. I know you're going to bring new and exciting things to us. Not quite like the last chair, but I'm sure. I had, I had to throw that in, but, but thank you so much, Chairman Henderson. Uh, you now have the gall.
Well, thank you, Councilman Oglesby. And first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership over this past year, particularly in the last couple of weeks in this new era of technology and our online meetings. I, I, I feel like you've done an excellent job. And I certainly want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank the entire council for their trust that they placed in me, uh, putting me, uh, at the, at the Chair. And I certainly appreciate that. So at this time, I will open the floor for Vice Chair. Uh, do I have?
You do.
Any nominations? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would also like to echo your sentiments towards, uh, Councilman Oglesby. Uh, thank you for your leadership. And it's been a s- pleasure, pleasure, sir, serving uh, under your leadership and serving alongside of you as I do with every member of council. Um, I truly appreciate each and every one of you. For Vice Chairman, I would like to place a denomination, uh, Councilman Ken Smith.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilman Ken Smith for Vice Chair. It's been properly seconded. Do we have any other nominations at this time for Vice Chair? Uh, Councilwoman Burge, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you very much. I have moved that we accept this by acclamation.
Um, okay, it's been moved, uh, by Councilwoman Burge. Let's see, we still have to have a roll call.
Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, have a roll call?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford? Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
And Chairman Henderson?
Yes. Councilman Smith, congratulations on Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir.
You have any words for us?
No, I'd say congratulations to you as well. Uh, I think a bigger congratulations to past Chair Oglesby on the second best day as Chairman of the City Council. And, uh, thank you to everyone. Um, I am, I'm very honored to be able to engage in, in this role, uh, yet once again. And I look forward to the next year. So far, it's, it's been an interesting one just in the last several months. So, um, we, we will keep, keep on keeping on and doing what we can to serve this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. Uh, Councilman Oglesby? I've got a, I've got a distinct advantage over you in this role. I have a much better Vice Chair than you have.
Second.
That goes to be seen. I don't know about that.
All right, all right, let's get into our agenda. We have no special presentations for tonight. So we'll move into our order of business for City Council. I do need approval for the minutes.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Just eight yeses.
Okay, motion is approved. Eight oh. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our agenda. Uh, item six, public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you read, uh, item six?
An ordinance be annexing a certain parcel adjacent to the current city limits, which is located at twenty-eight fifteen Military Road within the city of Chattanooga in Hamilton County, Tennessee.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, because so many of the participants, they need to be here for the hearing. Uh, the administrators and department heads are out doing tornado relief work, uh, out in the affected area. So I'm going to ask that we defer this item until April the twenty-eighth.
Okay, we have a motion for deferral to April twenty-eighth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses. Oh, uh, Councilman Oglesby, did I ever see your vote?
No, you didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's gonna take some getting used to. Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's eight yeses.
Now that's eight yeses. Okay, eight oh to defer till April the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Uh, we have no items on the final reading. And now we'll move into ordinances on first reading. Madam Clerk, if you would, read eight A, please.
An ordinance to make Chattanooga City Call Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight zoning ordinance. So it's a rezon property located at seventy-three oh one Schalifer Row from R one residential zone, the C four planned commerce center zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Ledford, this is in your district.
Yes, sir, thank you. Do we have, uh, Mr. Bridger?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'm Mr. Bridger, just a moment.
Bring him in.
Mr. Bridger, if you would unmute your mic.
Sir.
All right, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can see you.
Hey, John.
Hey.
Uh, so, uh, this project on, in District Four here, I believe we have a deferral date on this. Do you have that date handy?
Yes, it would be till the second Tuesday in May, which would be May twelfth.
Thank you. I apologize. My notes are a little scattered at this time.
No problem.
Um, Mr. Chairman, now, we need to go through our procedure, but given that this is a deferral, how do you want to handle any opposition or, and/or hear the case?
Well, unless we want to go through the whole presentation, I would just say, uh, if it's been requested to defer, we just, uh, make a motion to defer and then we'll hear it on the April, the, I'm sorry, May, May the twelfth.
May twelfth. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer this till May twelfth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to defer until May the twelfth with a proper second. Madam, is there any questions? Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Okay, uh, motion carries eight zero to defer until May the twelfth. Uh, if there is anyone in attendance, uh, that would like to vote opposition, if you would log back in on May the twelfth and join our council meeting either virtually or hopefully by that time we'll be live.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you read eight B, please?
An ordinance to make Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight zoning ordinance. So it's a rezon property located at seventy-five oh nine Ziegler Row from RT one residential townhouse zone to R three residential zone, subject to certain conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ledford, uh, this is in your district. Would you like a presentation?
Uh, I do not, sir, unless there is opposition. And I'm not sure how we're handling that right now, Mr. Vice Chairman Smith.
Well, let me, let me do this. Um, Councilman Smith, do you show any, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Smith, do you show anybody registered in opposition to item eight B?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, we're, we're not showing any opposition registered, Councilman Ledford.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a situation where we normally probably wouldn't use an R three tool, but it is in the community benefit and what the community wish to happen in reduction in density. So I do feel this is the right avenue to travel down. And I would like to make a motion to approve the planning version.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the planning version with a proper second. Do we have any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Okay, uh, eight yes, eight oh, the motion to approve. Thank you, Councilman Ledford. Now we'll move into resolutions. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you would, nine A.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development to renew a contract with Civic Plus Inc. for a management software system that facilitates online reservations and payments for city parks, facilities, and outdoor Chattanooga programs for the first of two available renewal terms in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
All right, uh, Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Uh, and a second, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, if you'll take the roll, please.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move into our short-term vacation rental applications. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you would, read nine B, please.
A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application number nineteen STBR zero zero one eight four for property located at fourteen twenty Madison Street.
Okay, I'm looking, uh, Vice Chair Smith is, um, Charlie Young.
Excuse me.
Oh.
Councilman Burr.
Let, let me, let me bring, uh, let me bring Charlie on board first, or Mr. Young. Do you see Mr. Young on board, Vice Chair? I was looking for him.
Mr. Chair, I, you're looking for Caleb, correct?
Well, I was thinking Charlie was going to present, but we'll take.
No, it, it should be Caleb. Bringing him in now, sir.
Bring, bring on, bring in Caleb. Mr. Fisher, if you will unmute your mic, please, sir. Let us know you're with us.
I am here.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, Councilman Burr, this is in your district. Would you like a presentation?
Uh, no, sir. I, uh, I, I understand the process, uh, what's going on with this application. Uh, the neighborhood, uh, of Madison, uh, they're working on, uh, getting their things together when it comes to rules and regulations of how, uh, they would like for me to represent them when it comes to, uh, short-term vacation rentals. So I would like to ask the, uh, city attorney and Mr. Caleb, uh, from this point, uh, that we're at now by our own rules and regulations, how far can I defer this out, uh, to give this community time to, uh, work with this, uh, you know, the, the people that are trying to, uh, submit for the short-term vacation rental? How, how long can you give me of a deferral that I can, that I could request?
The, the ordinance requires there to be some type of hearing within a hundred and twenty days after the application is filed. So Caleb would have to tell us when that is.
Mr. Fisher, could you unmute and let us know how long it has been currently since, uh, they registered?
I'm looking it up. Fourteen twenty Madison Street, the hundred and twenty days expired on April eighth.
We're past our hundred and twenty days already.
We're past a hundred and twenty. So at this point, what I have to, uh, how, if, by us being past the hundred and twenty days, uh, that means a decision would have to be made today. So by decision being made today, um, if that decision, uh, was yes, it would go forward. If that decision was no, how long, how, how would it be for that, for you to reapply again? How long would they have to take to reapply again?
Caleb, I believe there's a provision about, uh, they have.
One year.
One year.
One year from date of denial. One year from later than that.
Councilman Burr, would you like to move this to the end of the agenda so you could think about this?
Yes, uh, and please.
Okay.
If we can.
If, if you'll make a motion to move this to the end of the agenda?
Uh, I would definitely would like to make a motion to, uh, move it to the end of the agenda. End of the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to move it to the end of the agenda. And I've got a proper second. Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please. I'm sorry, have we got a question?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that, um, I have no problem in doing this. I'm not opposing that. But we do have the applicant raising their hand. Did you wish to hear from them or wait until the very end?
Um, let, let, Councilman Burr, what, what would be your pleasure in this?
We can wait till the end.
Okay, let's wait till the end.
Very well. Hold on, sir.
Uh, any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk, uh, motion to move to the end of the agenda.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Eight oh to move to the end of the agenda. Uh, carries. Councilman Burr, it's your responsibility to remind me before we go into other business.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, at this time, would you read, um, what are we on, nine B, please? I'm sorry, nine C.
A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application number twenty STBR zero 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 one for property located at seventeen twenty-one West Thirty-Ninth Street.
Uh, Councilman Oglesby?
Yes, um, even though we saw a presentation, uh, last week, I would like to review it again before I, uh, hear from the applicants and any opposition that's here.
Sure. Mr. Fisher, if you would, uh, bring up a screen with your, uh, presentation, please.
All right, can you see the screen?
Sure can.
I don't believe that's it. Nope.
Oh.
Yeah, there we go.
There it is.
All right, seventeen twenty-one West Thirty-Ninth Street, uh, the first short-term rental of the year. Um, here you can see the surrounding, uh, short-term rentals, mostly the green being owner-occupied issued with purple, non-owner occupied on the outskirts. This is the overhead satellite view of the property. And here we have the pictures from various angles around it. This is a corner, down long view, down west thirty-ninth, up west thirty-ninth. Kind of the back angle of the property showing the parking pad, down west thirty-ninth. And then the timeline shown, uh, turned in the application second day of January. The sign and inspection information was emailed on the seventh, notification letters mailed on the ninth, sign posted on the tenth. And it's a new property or a new structure receiving its CO last November. Um, and here we are at City Council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council, Oglesby, you have any questions?
No, 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 I do not. I'd now like to hear from the applicant or, and the, any opposition that's here.
Okay, Vice Chair, would you, uh, please bring up the applicant? And I think that would be under Jill Green.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if we can ask them to raise their hand as well. We do have, uh, it looks like five people that have registered in opposition.
Okay.
I believe they are in opposition from what the, the notes state. Um, and now I have screen to bring into the conversation.
Could we, could we, yeah, there we go, do away with the screen. Okay. Uh, Ms. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, you do have five minutes to give your presentation. Uh, Vice Chair, Vice Chair.
I've got it.
Would you give me a timer, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, got it. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Green.
Okay, um, I, I won't repeat, uh, all of what I said last week, but I guess I would like to say a few points, um, since I didn't have a chance to speak after the opposition. One, I think, resounding theme with the opposition was the, the traffic on the road and that they really don't have a desire to have more of it. And while I can appreciate that and understand that, it just, it's a public road. And so they, they simply don't have the legal capacity to mandate traffic on a road, particularly, particularly to a property that a homeowner owns, um, or anyone owns. And so, um, I, I certainly understand the, the concern, but, um, there, there's also been some confusion maybe between some of the, um, opposition and the developer builder, unrelated to me. It has nothing to do with me, but I think they were told that maybe the city was going to redo the road because the road's in poor condition. I agree, the road is in poor condition. Um, I don't know where the city stands on that. I've heard that the city's not redoing the road. Um, and for various reasons, I'm sure, cost and accessibility and difficulty, whatever. Um, but that is a matter between the residents and the city of Chattanooga. On the second issue that keeps coming up is the parking. And I, I heard two of the opposition say that they were promised that parking. And again, I, I feel for them because they don't have parking, uh, like I do. But I also built that parking on the property that I legally own and I built it intentionally and at great cost. It has a retaining wall that is made out of material that you build interstates with, you know, because it was meant to be there, it was meant to stay there and be safe and secure and look good. Um, and so I heard two people say that, that they were promised that. Again, if that's something that the builder or the developer told them, I, I am terribly sorry. But it's a civil matter between them and the builder. And the, there's a legal deed that, that tells us who owns the parking and, and it's me. It's on my deed. I have it via a warranty deed. If they were promised that from the builder, they really should have gotten a warranty deed to convey it or they should have, um, gotten some sort of easement recorded. And none of this would be an issue, you know, now. But the parking is on my property and built at my cost and with my foresight. Um, because I know an issue with short-term rentals is parking. And so I don't want to contribute to parking issues or difficulties with people getting in and out. So I have built a expensive pad and then I have a driveway. You can easily park, you know, certainly four cars at no problem. If you got creative, you could park more, maybe five, you know? Um, one thing I mentioned, um, I did talk with Ms. Oglesby and I did mention that I'm perfectly fine with, um, the restriction of three parking, no more than having three cars there. I don't think that's even going to be an issue. Most short-term rental or vacation travelers, business travelers, they, they really don't come with many cars. They usually come with a car or sometimes they Uber. Um, I think you'll, I think they will find that there's actually less traffic on the street than if I put a long-term tenant in there or if I move there. If I move there, I personally would bring three vehicles with me. And, and I would come in and out of my property a lot and have friends over for dinner and whatnot. That's not going to be the case for short-term rental. It would be probably, uh, high occupancy would be fifty percent. The other thing I will say is there, there is precedence, obviously, to have SDRs around here. We can see that. There are other SDRs. Um, and it's a, the zoning for the SDRs was already established by the city. And that's actually one of the reasons I bought there is because it was established and there was precedence. Um, most of them knew that, the opposition, because they purchased in eighteen or nineteen when that was clearly established. There's no HOA. There never has been an HOA. Um, I understand why people like HOAs, but there's, there's literally thousands of neighborhoods in Chattanooga that have them. And this one does not. Um, so, um, again, like I said last week, I want to do everything I can to be, to not cause any issues with the neighborhood or whatnot. And somebody mentioned the grass last week. I'll go ahead and address that in case I don't get a chance to. Totally my fault. I've had a hysterectomy and been out of work and then the coronavirus and just had not been. And then there's nothing been going on with this. It's been mowed. It's, it's on a schedule. It'll be taken care of. And there won't be any other issues. Um, but I, I want to, like I said, want to be a good neighbor, want to do the best thing I can, but I want to use the property the way I believe it is legally written to be able to use. That's all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, if, if, if you'd stay, uh, Councilman Smith or Vice Chair Smith, if you'd leave Ms. Green on, uh, for the time being, just mute her, uh, mic. Councilman Oglesby, do you have any questions for Ms. Green at this time?
Uh, no, I haven't. And I'd like to hear from the, uh, opposition.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Smith is Mr., or, well, I'm sorry, is, uh, I have one listed as Cape Art. Are they registered?
I do not see that registration. Uh, I do have Art and Vicky Lewis as registered, if you'd like to move to them at this time.
Okay, let's bring on Art and Vicky Lewis, please. And, and let me just say this. Let me remind everyone that we did and do ask you to go online and register to, uh, speak. Uh, you can do that through Chattanooga.gov. Go to the council website, to the council link, and request to, uh, register to speak. All right, uh, the Lewis's are, are live. If you'd like to go ahead. You will have five minutes total. And it looks like there are four other people that would like to speak. You will have five minutes total, and it looks like there are four other people that would like to speak as well. Go ahead.
Okay, we moved in, actually, we started building in twenty fourteen. And actually did not move in until twenty sixteen, which is the year before twenty eighteen. Um, it's a residential neighborhood, we have children, we have elderly people, there are people, and we know each other, we are a family neighborhood. And we're not looking for various and sundry people coming in.
Can you hear us?
Mr. Chair, I cannot hear.
Okay.
Either.
Uh, okay, um, Vice Chair Smith, let, let's, uh, let's go to another, let's go to another opposition until we maybe have a better feed from the Lewis.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like, and I don't know who was next, but just coming down the list, uh, Grefari, I believe is.
Um.
Are they registered?
I've, no, I do not see that. I'll, I'll tell you, Mr. Chair, we've got Ben Grady, Jamie Riley, Art Lewis, uh, Janie and Doug Dunn, and Vicky Lewis. Those are the only individuals that have registered to speak in opposition to this case. And I don't, there is a Cal, uh, there's a Calvin Lewis, but I don't know if that's related to Art and Vicky. And other than that, sir, uh, nobody else raising their hands are on my list.
Okay, I don't see a Grady with his hand up, but, so let's go to the Calvin Lewis.
Very well.
Mr. Lewis, if you could unmute your mic.
Uh, thank you, City Council, um, there was, there is, thank you. There is more issues than just the parking and all this. We do have elderly people wrap it around the house, and this is to us not a residence when you are renting out the property to people. A short-term rental, that's more of a business. We should not have to deal with the problems, the loud music, people coming and going, not knowing who they are. When we are residents at the neighborhood, she is not. The others are Airbnbs where people are residents, this one is not. And I do not think this falls on a residential when she's making money and we're dealing with the problems. And with destruction going on about the house, there's already too much traffic of that, but that's not all the issues. We just do not want, uh, the short-term rental of this type in our neighborhood. And we will continue to, um, uh, oppose it every year it comes up. And if there's a problem, I will call the police every time there's a problem. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Chair Smith, uh, you said there was a Grady?
Yes, Ben Grady.
Ben Grady, would you bring them on?
Yes.
Mr. Grady, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, all right, hold on, let's put the clock back up, and you can begin. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, guys. Yeah, so we had a, a neighborhood meeting about this, and Mr. Oglesby was kind enough to come out and just kind of hear us through. And so for me personally, it, it's, it's absolutely nothing personal against Ms. Green, um, at all. To me, it's, it's an issue with our little corner of St. Elmo up here, and for my concern, my wife's concern, um, certainly we have safety concerns. Parking up here is an issue for sure, as Mr. Oglesby can see. It's steep, like the picture showed, um, and I, I get that the road, the public road is not Ms. Green's problem, I, I agree with that. The concerns that we have, um, noise, the, uh, the neighborhood is an opposition. Um, and another thing that we discussed is, um, there are studies that show that property values can be negatively affected by this. Um, and there's been, there's lots of cities among the southeast, Nashville, um, some in Louisiana, New Orleans, that have, um, basically done away with non-owner occupied, short-term rentals. And, um, for me, I asked Mr. Oglesby, um, very directly to please vote against this. We are a very tight-knit community up here, St. Elmo is unique in Chattanooga, and that's one of the draws to it, is how close-knit we are. Um, and one thing I want to address, Ms. Green said, uh, that when we moved in here, that we were aware that short-term rentals were allowed by non-owner occupied. Um, to me, the reason that we're doing this, the reason that there's an application, is because they're not just freely given, there's an application process. And as far as I can tell and talking to people, the number one reason why, um, other than obvious issues, code issues or something like that, the number one reason why non-owner occupied, short-term rentals are rejected is because the locals choose and voice their concerns, and they choose to not have it, or they, they voice their concern about not wanting that in their neighborhood. So I am, and, and along with basically all the neighbors that I, that I know of are voicing our opinions and are loudly and clearly, we're asking you guys to vote against it in this case. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grady. Uh, Vice Chair, if you'd stop the clock, and we'll start back at the same place. It's, um, if you would bring the, uh, the attendee Dunn up.
All right, Mr. Chair, you want to start it at that two minutes, twenty-nine seconds left?
Uh, opposition is five minutes, it's supposed to be five minutes total.
Sorry, sir, got it going.
Okay. Okay. Somebody's got some echo going on. Uh, attendee Dunn, are you with us?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Okay, you have two minutes remaining.
Our concern was very similar to what Grady was, it's about the sense of community that we have here in this little area of St. Elmo. And Mr. Oglesby was kind enough to come out and have a meeting with us, and with that meeting, the, every neighbor around that house, I mean, every single house came out and had a conversation with Oglesby and opposition of it. And it's, when you look around and you see the other rentals, I mean, some of them are owner-occupied already, and that's fine. But when you look at the numbers that are around, it seems to be getting oversaturated with too much. And so the, the part with, we would love to have long-term neighbors there, long-term renters. But the issue is, we would like more sense of a community, get to know the people, and not try to rent out all of St. Elmo, and that's all that I had.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Smith, if you'd stop the clock, I do show one more, uh, with her hand raised. Uh, let me get back to my, tell you, these screens going back and forth are hard to deal with. I have a Riley, do you have them on? Do you have them registered, Jamie Riley?
I do.
Okay, would you bring them up, please? Okay, attendee Riley, would you unmute, and I think you have about a minute left.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted to second what Ben Grady said and the Dunn said, that we definitely have a very tight sense of community here. We enjoy the, um, we enjoy the community, we enjoy each other, we look out for each other, we care about each other. And we really truly want a neighbor that fits into our, um, neighborhood with us, that cares about our neighborhood, that cares about our neighbors. We do not want, um, transient, weekly changing people. We want someone that we can know and that we can care for and look out for, just as we, you know, hope that they would know and care for us as well. I think we have one more that wants to speak, I just wanted to reiterate and say, please vote no on this.
Okay, Councilman Smith, if you'd, uh, forgive me for not using your proper title at this point in time, uh.
Yeah, I haven't got it figured out yet, huh?
I, I have, I have one more, it looks like with her hand raised, in opposition, uh, Cape Art, I believe.
Yep, I've got it coming right now.
Okay. All right, attendee Cape Art.
Hi.
Thank you, you have just a few seconds left, if you'd like to begin.
I, I would also like to reiterate what my, um, neighbors and truly family have stated. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Ms. Green states that she wants to cause no issues within the community. Well, unfortunately, parking would be an issue. Unfortunately, our close family niche that we have up at the top of Thirty-Ninth Street is what we're all about. And I truly hope you guys hear us and understand and vote no against this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, there we go. Councilman Oglesby, uh, now, hold on one second. Vice Chair, would you remove, uh, well, unless, Vice, where did, uh, Councilman Oglesby go? There, there he is. Sorry, do you have any questions for the opposition or for the applicant?
No, I haven't, I've, I've already had extensive conversation with, with both groups.
Okay, very good. Uh, Vice Chair Smith, if you'd take them off, there we go. We have, uh, Mr. Fisher left.
Okay, great, do I have it, the floor?
You've got it.
Yeah, like I said, okay, I've, I've had extensive conversations, uh, with, with, with applicant Ms. Green and with the Neighborhood Association. Uh, Ms. Green earlier today, along with her presentation, which was a great presentation, and an extensive conversation last Thursday with the neighborhood. And, uh, it, it, it is a great neighborhood and it is a great house. And there are some safety issues from my perspective that I personally saw when I went up there that, that needs some attention to, that could potentially, um, uh, impede the public safety, fire, police from getting up there. And I, I saw that there were some issues with public works being able to get up and down with trash and, and recycle. Um, my decision is based on what I think is best, uh, it's, it's not influenced by anybody or any group. That's what I was elected to do. And, uh, given the number of opposition letters and the, uh, petition I got, uh, counsel, I'm going to have to, uh, um, ask that, um, to deny this, uh, application for the short-term vacation rental.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion to deny with a proper second. Do we have any questions from the council? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll take the role.
Councilwoman Burz?
Yes.
Councilman Bird?
Councilman Bird?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffert?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yes.
Eight oh to approve the denial, so motion to deny is approved. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you read, please, nine D under human resources?
A resolution authorizing the chief human resources officer to renew a last-year option with cornerstone on demand for the learning management system in the amount thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Councilman Gilbert, I see your hand.
Yes, sir, Chair, I'd like to, uh, defer this to April the twenty-first.
Okay, we have a motion to defer until April the twenty-first, you have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer it to April the twenty-first, any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leffert?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Bird?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burz?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yes.
Eight oh to defer until April the twenty-first, thank you. At this time, would you read, uh, nine E, please?
A resolution authorizing the office of the city attorney to retain Core Engineering LLC for expert witness services in the defense of two civil cases against the city, Karen Allen, heir and next of kin of Charlie Allen, descendant versus city of Chattanooga, and James P. Little, MD, and Little Company of Tennessee, LLC versus city of Chattanooga, for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Councilwoman Burz?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, properly seconded by Councilman Bird. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burz?
Yes.
Councilman Bird?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffert?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Okay, motion to approve carries eight zero. Uh, Madam Clerk, now we'll move into planning, which will have, uh, opportunity for applicant and opposition. Uh, Councilman Smith, if you would be getting the applicant ready for us, as well as John Bridger, in case we need, uh, a presentation. Um, Madam Clerk, if you would read nine F, please.
A resolution approving a special exceptions permit for a planned unit development for properties located in the nineteen-hundred block of Mac Lane, eighty-six-hundred block of Igo Gap Road, and nineteen, nineteen-hundred block of Morris Hill Road.
Councilman Leffert, I believe this is your district?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. Um, do we have opposition registered, Vice Chairman Smith?
No, sir.
Okay, John, you want to walk us through this, and then you have a list of thirteen conditions that I think we were able to arrive at through community meetings and, uh, conversation.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Bridger.
Okay, um, yes, I've already given you a presentation at the committee meetings, you just kind of cover the conditions?
Yeah, if you would read the thirteen conditions, please.
Um, so there's thirteen conditions, the first one says, "A minimum twenty-foot type landscape buffer consisting of evergreen trees, minimum two-inch caliber at the time of planting shall be installed and maintained along the western and northern outer boundaries of the development, as well as along a portion of the eastern boundary, as generally depicted on the approved site plan. Those areas where a string buffer exists will negate the requirement of this buffer, as well as requiring any plantings east of the existing string buffer. The buffer shall consist of two rows of trees planted on ten-foot centers and the trees stagger between rows. No species of, any one tree shall constitute more than forty percent of the tree plantings." That's the first condition. The rest is a little shorter than that. Um, second one is sixty-foot building setback from the proposed new right-of-way of Igo Gap Road. Third, paved parking area shall be no closer than sixty feet from the proposed new right-of-way of Igo Gap Road. Fourth, the development shall provide a gated entrance and an appropriate turnaround between the gated entrance and Igo Gap Road. Fifth, Igo Gap Road shall be widened to a minimum twenty-four feet in width along the entire frontage of the development, and a dedicated left-hand turn lane along Igo Gap provided into the development. Six, provide and maintain a clubhouse and pool for the development. Seven, a minimum area of four acres dedicated as community space. Eight, the development shall provide and maintain an interior network of walking pathways as generally depicted on the approved site plan or otherwise provided. Nine, Mac Lane, a private driveway, shall be dedicated to one or more of the adjoining properties using Mac Lane for ingress, egress, subject to their acceptance. Number ten, a minimum of fifty-two-inch caliber trees with a minimum of twenty-five trees to be evergreen trees. Trees to be planted from the proposed right-of-way of Igo Gap Road to a distance of forty feet back from the right-of-way. Any required street yard tree plantings will count towards this requirement. Eleven, all buildings shall be set back a minimum of forty feet from all exterior boundaries which adjoin residential properties. Twelve, compactor and/or dumpster shall be located no closer than eighty feet to any adjoining residential zone properties. Garage pickup shall be limited to occur only between the hours of eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. And then the last condition, number thirteen, as indicated on the submitted site plan dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty, no more than a hundred and twenty-eight dwelling units on the site, limited to one unit and two-unit structures, the maximum height not to exceed two stories or thirty-five feet.
Thank you, John. Uh, city attorney, do you have a copy of that?
I, I do not right now, but I will add that here to the agenda here for this evening on first reading.
Thank you, uh, Phil.
And this is a resolution, actually, so it'll take only one reading.
Correct. So, John, this is, uh, this is walking through the PUD process, working with the community. Uh, Lord knows District Four can use all the improvement we can get right now. So I appreciate the developer working with the community and myself to bring about, uh, a, a better product than I think we started with, and I'd like to move for approval with conditions.
Second.
Second.
Uh, okay, I'm not sure who, I think I've heard Councilman Smith or Vice Chair Smith second that. So we have a motion to approve with conditions seconded by Vice Ca, Councilman Smith, Vice Chairman Smith. Uh, is there any questions?
I got my hand up, Mr. Chair.
Uh, you sure do. Councilman Mitchell?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question, and I'm not sure if the developers in the audience, but I'd just like to hear from the developer. So if not, we'll just move on, but is the developer okay with all thirteen of these?
Uh, are you asking me, Councilman?
I think, Miss, I think Councilman, uh, Mitchell's wanting to hear from Mr. Price. Uh, Vice Chair, would you bring up Mike Price, please? Mr. Price, you are on, if you'd unmute, uh, you have the floor. Mr. Price, can you hear us? Vice Chair?
Yeah, it's, he's unmuted on our end.
So on his, on his end. I'm showing him is unmuted. Okay.
Let's, let's, let's move on then.
All right. So we do have a motion on the floor to approve with conditions in a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Councilman Leffler?
Thank you, sir. If I may help, I don't want to answer the question for Mr. Price, but Mr. Price was very involved in the conversation and helped draft some of the conditions to make this a better product. And I hope that, hopefully, that answers your question in regards to his approval or opinion on this. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you.
Very well, let's move on. Madam Clerk, if you would, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Okay, motion to approve passes with eight zero. At this time, we'll move into Public Works, and with no objection from the council, I would like to read items G and I and vote on these as a package if there's no objection from this council. If not, Madam Clerk, would you read G and I, please?
G, a resolution authorizing approval change order number two final for integrated properties LLC of Chattanooga, Tennessee, relative to contract number C one six zero zero five two zero one, City Yards Carpenter Shop and Water Quality Storage Building, for an increased amount of four thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars to release the remaining contingency in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one dollars for revised contract amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. I, a resolution authorizing a payment in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to southeastern Greenwood LLC for the required wetlands mitigation fee to satisfy T-Dex requirements related to property to be used for the Waste Resource Division renewable energy project.
What's the pleasure, counsel?
Move to approve.
And that would be, that would be moved to approve items G and I. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the floor? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Eight zero to approve these two items. Okay, at this time, would you read item H, please? Nine H.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the City of Red Bank adjusting the boundaries in accordance with TCA Section six fifty-one three oh two for vacant parcel land adjacent to Pine Breeze Road, so that it will be maintained and be included in the corner boundaries of the City of Red Bank on the effective date of this attached interlocal agreement form.
Councilman Mitchell, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe our attorney and Red Bank's attorney needs a little more time to bake this thing, and so I'm going to ask for a motion for a two-week deferral until April twenty-eighth.
Yes. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to defer until April twenty-eighth, a proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Motion to defer until April the twenty-eighth is approved with eight zero. Thank you. At this time, would you read nine J, please?
A resolution authorizing approval or change order number one with eight S.A. Engineering Consulting for contract number D one seven zero one nine one zero one for Patent Parkway Pedestrian Plaza for an increased amount of eighty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents for revised contract amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-seven thousand seven hundred dollars and sixteen cents.
Councilman Mitchell, I see a hand. Is that from the previous item or?
No, sir, Mr. Chair. I, I'm just questioning, Mr. Attorney, should this read change order number one A from some adjustments that were offered up earlier?
Yes, sir. There, there was an adjustment that was made to this actual change order. The request was made at this afternoon's meeting that two items could be on there subject to the city's approval or not here on those two items. And that has been added to the change order that has been provided by A.S.A.
So that is one A instead of just one, correct?
Yes, sir. I think we should say one A. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve one A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve one A, and it's been properly seconded. Any questions from the council? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Okay, motion to approve passes with eight zero. All right, at this time, we're ready for purchases. I'll see Mr. Sammons, and he's on board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think we need to go back to, oh, oh, you're right.
There's, yeah.
Councilman Byrd?
Councilman, Councilman Byrd did not remind me.
I, I put my hand up. I didn't want to be rude.
Okay, Madam Clerk, just to refresh our memory, would you, let's go back to item nine B and read nine B again, please.
A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application numbers nineteen S.T.B.R. zero zero one eight four for property located at fourteen twenty Madison Street.
Councilman Byrd?
Uh, yes, sir. I was able to work out some things, and due to the community getting these things together and working on this process, we decided, and I'm asking the attorney, will it be okay for action to be made if I was to move to table this for one month?
Yes, sir. You can take an action to table this, this hearing for one month. We need to have a specific date if you're going to do that. The ordinance generally requires for the hearing to take place not later than a hundred and twenty days, but at this point in time, you would not be denying this request. You would just simply be tabling this request, and there would be no problem with the applicant having to wait for twelve months.
Okay, so we can table for one month? Yes, and what day would that be?
May twelfth is our, is our normal planning date. You want to put it in? May twelfth.
Yeah, so I would like to move to May twelfth.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to table until May twelfth with a proper second. Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Motion to table till May the twelfth carries eight zero. At this time, are we ready now to go to purchases? If so, Mr. Sammons, would you unmute your mic? Mr. Sammons, can you hear us? Vice Chair, can you unmute for him? All right, here we go. Mr. Sammons, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Would you go ahead and, would you go ahead and read the purchases, please?
I will. This evening, for council's consideration and approval, we have three purchase items, and also want to bring to your attention the emergency purchase items that were listed for your informational purpose. The first item tonight is from the Facilities Management Division of Public Works. It's for the services of Lock &amp; Key, and it's being awarded to Ace Lock &amp; Key and Rick's Lock &amp; Key LLC for a total estimated annual cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our next item is from the Fleet Management Division of Public Works for maintenance and repair for light-duty Ford vehicles. It's being awarded to Mountain View Ford Lincoln and Marshall Mize Ford for a total estimated annual cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the last new purchase item from Facilities Management Division of Public Works for emergency services, disaster recovery, including restoration and finishing, being awarded to Bell Ford USA Group Incorporated for a total estimated annual cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
There you have a second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Let's say yeses.
Motion to approve carries with eight zero. Mr. Sammons, do we have some emergency purchases that you need to go over?
Yes, we do. We have three emergency purchases. Two are COVID-nineteen-related items. One was an emergency purchase item, unfortunately, was not listed on the March thirty-first listing of emergency purchases prior to council reconvening. That one item was from Public Works. It was for the purchase of thirty thousand recycle containers. This is in collaboration with T-Dex project for recycling. The purchase should have been listed with those emergency purchases at that time, but for some reason, it was not. This item was placed for emergency purchase because of a deadline that was due to have this taken care of and submitted by April fourth. And we were able to buy the executive, buy the emergency purchase to have that taken care of. And this process, again, fell out of order and was not listed among those other emergency purchases at that time. The two latter purchases, both from Human Resources, are COVID-nineteen-related for the purchase of buckets and spray bottles for the use of disinfectant, and the other is for rags for the use, along with the disinfectants, and purchase of gloves.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, those are emergency purchases. There is no vote needed at this time, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any questions from the council on these emergency purchases? Okay, I see no hands. We're going to move on. At this time, we'll go to, thank you, Mr. Sammons.
Thank you.
We'll move to other business. Do we have anyone with other business that they would like to share with us at this time?
Mr. Chair? Sorry, go ahead, counsel.
Well, Councilman Leffler, if you'd like to go first, I'm going to recognize. And Vice Chair Smith, would you bring on the chief of, Kerry Hayes, please?
Which one? Yes, sir.
Kerry Hayes. I'm, so, yeah, Chief of Staff. Councilman Leffler, if you'd like to go ahead with your comments, please.
Sir, if you don't mind, that's, I was actually going to ask if we had anyone from admin on that would talk a little bit about what happened in District Four in the East Brainerd East Hamilton area first, and then I'll reserve my comments.
Okay. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. I want to first extend my congratulations to our new chair and vice chair on behalf of the administration. Very excited to spend what promises to be a very interesting year, working with you all, doing what we can in these trying times to keep things moving forward. My condolences on behalf of the administration to everyone in District Four and District Six, I think also District Five, who are suffering. The, the, the work that you have seen from our Public Works staff and our Chattanooga Police Department and Chattanooga Fire Department over the last couple of days has been absolutely nothing short of heroic. It is astonishing how hard these individuals are working. The collaboration between them is just a case study in everything good and valuable that the local government can do in times of crisis, and they deserve just our endless appreciation and thanks. I believe the chiefs are in this meeting somewhere. If you have specific questions for them, I know you got the nice update from, from Mr. Holland at the three-thirty meeting, but if you have other questions for our public safety staff, I know they're happy to address them. The recovery effort is, is going well. I know a tremendous amount of progress was made yesterday. More took place today. With us for a significant part of the afternoon, got a firsthand look at the damage with members of his administration. That, that assessment will factor into when and how FEMA is able to make a disaster declaration that we believe will unlock some additional resources to aid with that recovery effort. But for now, we're just continuing to do everything we can to, to, to let CPD and CFD and Public Works do, do what they need to do in terms of addressing the crisis that is still out there. We have gotten a tremendous amount of inquiry from, from wonderful people and organizations that want to donate money and time and supplies. We need a little bit of additional time to make sure that we can direct that in the most effective way. Folks who are interested in volunteering, and I know there are quite a number in everyone's district, I'll make sure this link ends up in, in the chat somewhere, or it's, it's on all of our Facebook pages, but it's C-H-A dot C-I-T-Y slash volunteer. It's a very simple form that people can just drop their information into.
Would you repeat that, please?
It's a C-H-A dot C-I-T-Y slash volunteer. And happy to make sure you get, you get that in your inboxes as well. But that's, that's our, that's the best way that we have right now, just capturing everyone's contact information. And once we have a location set up and a process for deploying people in a way that's safe, we will, we will immediately start putting people to work. As far as financial contributions, the best thing that people can still do is to donate to the local chapter of the Red Cross. They're, they're working super overtime to try to make sure people that need housing in particular are being taken care of and seeing to some other very immediate needs from, from families there that, that lost everything Sunday night. So we appreciate that. There may be some additional funds that are being set up to direct donations to some other frontline social service agencies, and I'll, and I'll be in touch with that as soon as I can let you know where those, where those are at. Looking forward to giving some of you a signal that you'd like to hear tomorrow, so we're, we're going to make that available tomorrow morning, again, with the police and fire department's help. So, so eager for you all to come out there and see exactly what's, what's been going on and the extent of the damage and how long this recovery effort will take. So in the meantime, the most important thing I think anybody can do for the, for the time being is just encourage folks to, to keep their distance. Any, any amount of traffic in the affected area is hazardous and dangerous and keeps our first responders from doing what they need to do. So they appreciate it, and I appreciate anything you can do to make sure that they are, that, that the general public is out of there for their own safety and for everyone's own. With that, happy to answer any questions or, or tell you whatever else I can tell you.
Hey, we have any quick, well, okay, go ahead, Councilman Leffler.
Thank you. Kerry, thanks for the update. When it comes to the monetary donations, are we still planning on, you and I, I know we're texting in the wee hours of the morning Monday about setting up the monetary donations through Community Foundation. Is that still the plan?
That is still a plan that's, that, that they are working out the details on. As, as I understand it right now, I spoke with Megan for a while this morning, and I know that she and her team are, I think, in the midst of trying to raise and allocate money for the coronavirus. They are now also having to stand this up, and so I think it's purely a capacity issue, as far as I understand it at this point. So I don't have a specific link or a button that folks can push at this point to make a contribution, but I know that everyone's eager to do that, and I'll, I'll be following up with you just as soon as I have some more information on where that's at.
Okay, please let us know.
Absolutely.
As most of you know, and Vice Chairman Smith, can you tell me if we, if we have both chiefs in the queue ready to go?
In the queue?
While you're looking for that, I just want to let everybody know or say a, a thank you. This has been a extremely difficult and a very life-changing experience. Our vice, our, 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 our first responders have gone beyond and above the call of duty once again. And I tell you, what I saw out there yesterday, walking from neighborhood to neighborhood, from house to house, was absolutely heartbreaking. It was people's lives literally thrown everywhere. I mean, you couldn't tell one house particle from another house particle. Cars completely destroyed, uh, homes. Uh, I looked at structures. I have a thousand pictures. My camera just couldn't hold anymore of what the devastation that ripped through literally, uh, the fabric of our, our community and, and just shredded. But what I also saw was very inspiring. I spoke to dozens and dozens of families on the street out in their driveways. I had neighbors walking pieces of what they thought was someone else's houses down to their house, people that were encouraged to see, uh, someone out there that cared. I'm glad that a lot of the state level officials got to go out today, today. Uh, I was out yesterday with Commissioner Maenda, and it was just incredible, the overwhelming spirit in people that they were A, alive, because once you see it tomorrow, I promise you, you will be changed forever. And you will start asking the same questions that I asked myself. How did you survive? And I think that we owe a lot to communication. I think we owe a lot to our meteorologists, our cell phones, our communication system in general, because the story that I received I, I'd heard over and over was, well, we were monitoring this on our smartphones. We were watching the local news, and when they told us to get to cover, we literally got to cover, and the next thing we know, the roof being lifted off of our house. I, I, I dare say that that was an incredible tool that we should all utilize and take very seriously. And I, I forgive the ramble, but this really has been another life-changing experience for me to see this devastation firsthand. I saw it once with Hurricane, Hurricane Katrina, and I thought, gosh, I never want to see this again. And then as I'm walking the streets of my district, people that I know and talk to, and I'm like, hey, we're so glad to see you. And I, I'm trying to, to, to relate to what it must be like. Um, my, my tornado came close to our house, but it did not damage our home, and, and I'm very grateful for that, but I'm, I'm want to make sure that we're out there doing everything that we can for those folks who can't get out of their homes, that folks that are there. A lot of misconceptions, and we had a long meeting today. We started at the EOC and ended up at the YMCA, trying to plan for the next phase. Uh, and I know that the Chiefs are on them. I'll let them talk about the different stages that we have, rescue, assessment, restoration, or cleanup. And I'll let them get into the details, and I know that we're in Phase Two and hopefully moving into Phase Three tomorrow. Um, one of the main pleas that I have to the public, and Kerry touched on it, is please, please do not come out here. Do not come out here and, and look, there's a, there are sometimes just a, a pathway of trees that you have to meander through. The crews are working so hard, and there's so many people that are coming out because they're curious, and I'm just asking and pleading with the public. If you do not, if you are not essential, please do not come out. And you're actually hurting the people who need the services. There's a lot to be done. I mean, if you drive along Igo Gap, you drive along Jenkins Road, there's not a utility pole even standing. There is nothing. I mean, you look across entire neighborhoods and it's second stories of houses are gone. And, and to come and look at that is a great disservice to the people who live there that really do need the help. And our first responders are, are absolutely phenomenal. I was able to be with them at the command site last night when they had to change over for second shift. And the enthusiasm from our police officers, officers in protecting, and the message from Chief Roddy was really on point. Uh, these folks have been through hell, and they have. And to know that the city has responded, to know that our, our governor and has responded and is, is, is going to do everything in his power is extremely powerful to citizens. It's extremely powerful to people who literally, in a split second, within minutes, lost everything. Lost the roof over their head. If that's never happened to you, I pray it never does, but to see it and to talk. Now, here's the good side. The good side was this, an amazing spirit in people. I witnessed it over and over again. We had people who simply said, I'm alive, I'm grateful. Um, I'll clean up, we'll get through this. And that spirit to overcome is what will pull East Brainerd out of this in no time. I, I feel it in my bones, just like we work through all of our adversity. We will work on this together, and we will prevail. We will pull out of this one step at a time, East Brainerd. And I want to thank our first responders again. If you haven't seen the boots-on-the-ground efforts that are done, when you think about our firefighters and our police, it is more than the job description that a lot of people think about. It is a level that absolutely is not only essential, but it comes from the heart, and these folks care, and they care deeply. And I'm very honored to, to know our firefighters, to be with them, uh, even at a social distance. I want to give up and run up to them and run up to them and give them the biggest hugs possible. Because these are folks who are out there, and they care, and they look you in the eye, and they say to you, we got this, and we're going to put it together. And I just want to thank everybody. Everybody has poured in with, with thoughts and their, 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 um, their love, and I think that's so important. And, you know, you, you know me by now, I, when I, I get very moved about something, I tend to kind of ramble, and that's where I'm at, because I'm speaking so deeply from my heart about the gratitude I have for the, the response of not only Chattanooga, but from our first responders and from people around the country that just want to help. We will get through this, and we'll do it one step at a time. Thank you, Chairman.
Chief Hyman, see that you're on. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. You have the floor, sir. Anything you'd like to comment or say?
Yes, uh, off, uh, the gratitude from Councilman Leffler, uh, the words that Carol so eloquently spoke earlier, um, and, and all the kind gratitude that all of you all have put out there does not go unnoticed, and will the firefighters and the police officers will certainly hear your sentiments. Um, and, and we just appreciate everybody's support during this difficult time. Um, I did want to give you a little bit of that, kind of where we're at, um, as we're, as we transitioned out of that rescue phase, uh, like Councilman Leffler was saying, the different phases that we're working in. Uh, coming out of that rescue phase with fortunately, um, although it is sad, uh, two fatalities, uh, and seventeen transports. Uh, honestly think that this could have been much, much worse with the amount of damage that we've seen on the ground. Um, we are transitioning into the damage assessment phase, which is the second phase of our event here. And in that damage assessment phase, uh, we're having to identify every single property and determine how much damage each parcel has had, be it twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, or total loss. Um, and in that damage assessment, those are numbers that are requested, uh, by TMA, uh, so that we can get cost recovery, um, done. We're about sixty percent complete with that, um, as of about five thirty, but I do still have crews coming in. Uh, by eight o'clock this evening, we should have that majority of that completed. But I want to share a couple of numbers with you. Um, current building data that we have now, as of five thirty, we were looking at about eighty-nine million dollars in damages, uh, to this area. And I think that's a staggering number, uh, and we're still waiting on teams to finish up the rest of that damage assessment. Um, overall, um, we have about twenty-five hundred properties that we have a data for, and we expect that number to almost double, uh, by the end of the day or tomorrow. Uh, once we finally transition out of this damage assessment phase. Um, overall, number of properties that have been affected is twelve thousand properties. Twelve thousand properties in the East Brainerd area have been affected by this. Uh, so a phenomenal amount of, of damage to homes have been, have been done, uh, and it's just, it's incredible when we finally get those numbers in there. Um, as we transition out of the damage assessment phase, uh, we'll be moving into the recovery phase, and this is an extremely important phase. This is what's helping, um, get our affected community members out there, stuff that they need. Um, we've put together DART teams, uh, to set up for pets and pet displacement. Uh, we were, uh, in the process of putting mental health, uh, teams in place, not only for first responders, but for our community as well. Uh, those will be stood up tomorrow and in, and, uh, are going to be for the next five to seven days, uh, just to, uh, just ask questions about mental health and try to cover that up. Uh, we've made special requests to TMA, uh, for food trucks tomorrow for the community. A lot of number of, uh, food trucks will be out there trying to serve people food and that. Uh, additionally, we've had about a thousand, a thousand trucks ordered, uh, four toilets, uh, pallets of water, all to be delivered, uh, in, in the coming days and particularly tomorrow. Um, the volunteer side of it, um, is, is being set up. I think we're still using the Y, um, as a volunteer site, uh, like Kerry mentioned to you, how we're handling that part. And that's kind of where we're at with the next phase. So in that recovery phase, the firefighters have gone from rescue mode to damage assessment mode and now transitioning into recovery mode. Uh, and that's when they'll be out there in ATVs, chainsaws, work gloves, bottles of water, trying to get all that information, trying to get all that support out there for the community as best we can. Uh, a lot of the work, uh, is still going to continue. A lot of work's been done up to this point by the first responders, uh, but even more will be done in the coming days, just helping folks get cleaned up. And I have Chief Roddy here, um, with me, um, and he'd like to speak a little bit to.
Thank you, Chief. Um, if I may.
Chief, Chief Roddy, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Um, again, echoing the same sentiment as Chief Hyman on just what the council has expressed to us, um, every single words are appreciated. Thank you all very much for that. Uh, your police officers are the same recovery efforts and rescue efforts, um, as are firefighter partners in this. And as we've moved through that, our posture has been one to maintain a position of direction and security, not only in the perimeter for traffic control, but with inside the area as well. So your officers have moved through that since yesterday, and through the overnight hours is one of our major focuses to make sure that we were able to provide security and presence inside the affected area. Obviously, with the power still being out, there was a concern over individuals that might come in and take advantage of, uh, just the darkness and the lack of presence. I spoke to a family member today whose son-in-law slept in his house last night. Um, that was a house with no windows, no power. No one in there with him because he was worried about the security of his family's home. Uh, he told his father-in-law this morning that he was not going to do that tonight. He saw the amount of police presence that was in there overnight and feels confident enough that he can leave what he left. Um, as tragic as that is, he feels confident leaving that in our hands. So we are going to keep that same posture up for the next few days at least, and then assess what the restoration of power looks like, what the number of people returning to their homes looks like, what's the presence in that area. And then we'll make assessments to figure out how we might adjust that presence looks like between, uh, eight PM and eight AM. Uh, but we will still maintain the traffic direction and control and the outside security that we have done since the beginning.
All right. Does Counsel have any questions for Chief Hyman or Chief Roddy?
I do, sir.
At this time, okay, I'll need to switch screens, so, yeah, Councilman Leffler.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Chief, uh, Hyman or Chief Roddy, either one can answer this. Can we talk a little bit? I know we've been stressing the, the importance of people staying away from this area so that we can, and in the city, and everyone can get in and do the things that they need to do, but can you talk about any improvement today in accessibility to the site?
I, I do know that Public Works, um, uh, and they did a report for you earlier. I know they've done an outstanding job, uh, clearing debris, and I know that they have a lot of, uh, they're calling in additional resources to help that. Um, uh, from what I've heard from the first responders, the, the access has gotten better since this morning even. Uh, so I know Public Works has been, we're uh, really doing a gentleman's job trying to get a lot of stuff cleared. Uh, but there are still areas that are, need to be impacted. Uh, some of the problems we've run into is some of the high-tension lines, um, uh, are, are difficult. We can't just go up there, cut them and move them. Uh, it, it, it's a process to get through that. Um, and it's a lot of time for EP to, uh, to get those lines taken care of. Uh, and until those are clear, it's hard to make access to some of those areas. Uh, but during that, um, as those access points open up, uh, the next plan is to, um, send EPB in to start repairing poles and, uh, trying to, at least for power over the coming days.
Very good. And in closing question, uh, what message would you give to Chattanoogaans in the surrounding area in, in the county? What message would you give to them right now, the best thing they could do to, to help out, uh, the folks in this affected area?
The best thing that they can do is, is stay out of the area, uh, so we can do our jobs, uh, stay out of the area as best you can, and uh, really focus on, um, the upcoming volunteer side at, at the Y. Um, that's where their focus can be really helpful. Uh, focus all, focus on donations to there, uh, and, and that will help us coordinate. Um, if we can coordinate it all through the Y Center, and folks are dropping stuff off there, it really reduces the amount of impact that we have on the community we're already trying to serve.
If I may add to that, um, Councilman, if, the advice I would like to give some other people is we understand that there are loved ones in the affected area that sons and daughters, mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters and friends are all coming in to try and help. Um, we saw that effort today. We saw parents that had driven from other states to check on their loved ones and to help clean up their homes, their yards. Um, that is the type of help that you would expect coming in at this moment. So it's, it's difficult for us when the number of cars coming into an area to try and, as people have an expectation of bedding that access, when you have a driver's license from Georgia presented by a couple saying, my daughter lives up there, and we have come from Georgia to help, and they have chainsaws in the bed of the truck. We're going to let them through because they're coming to help their family. We're not in, by any stretch, ever going to turn that away. Unfortunately, you have people still coming in that just simply want to see what's going on, and they drive through. So we ask those people, please stay out. But if you do come in to help, one thing that we would really believe that would help EPB, us, Public Works, Fire, and everyone else, is if you do park, don't park on the streets. Um, that was a real concerning thing that we saw today because most cars cannot pull in the driveway because the ways are already blocked with the residence vehicles who may even have a tree on them. Park in the yard, find a spot down the road, whatever we can do to keep vehicles from parking on the roadway clears that access for EPB and Public Works to get through there with that large machinery, which is cool for what they're trying to do right now. Um, the last point that I will, would like to express is, even if you're not coming into the affected area, the affected area is causing traffic concerns in concentric circles moving out. So you need to go to a hardware store to get some critical right now. Go to one in Hickson. Go to one in somewhere else.
There's one in Lookout Valley, Chief.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's one in Lookout Valley.
Or, or, yes, sir. Tetonia as well, yes, sir. Um, go somewhere other than around where there is already too much going on.
Please.
We under, those backups are causing lack of patience and frustration by individuals that are used to a thirty-minute travel time and it's taking them two hours. Go drive somewhere else for right now. Give us the, the ability to take a breath, get what we need in here and get our jobs done. And I promise you, you get returned to normal much, much quicker if people will simply stay away for a little while longer.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chairman, that's all I have for right now. Just again, thank you to everybody who has responded with emails and phone calls. Uh, there's a lot of homes, uh, we're still without power, but there's still a lot, a lot of people who are in their homes without power. And I think they're doing it, but we need to make sure that we clear those paths. We have accessibility in talking about getting essentials like water and meals to them. It's, it is truly essential that folks who do not need to be there to please stay away. Thank you, Chairman.
Good.
And Mr. Chair?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I, I'm just going to take a moment and echo the sentiments of, uh, Councilwoman Burris at the beginning, and then, uh, Councilman Leffler. Um, trying to stay in touch and, and hearing everything that's going on is, is incredible, and uh, there's no amount of thanks or appreciation that can be expressed for our, our first responders, Chief Hyman, Chief Roddy, uh, all the police department, fire department, all the work that they're doing. Um, but I also wanted to give a big thanks to some of our other partners. Um, Water Company, Gas Company, uh, EPB, uh, Evan Freeman, I've talked to him, the Director of Government Relations over there, and they have been uh, amazingly responsive. And I know there's a lot of people that are frustrated because they've been without power, not just in the, in that area, but also well outside of the area of the tornado. Um, but they don't, I don't fully comprehend the amount of devastation that we're talking about. And the way that some of our partners have responded, not just our first responders, but then those other organizations has truly been remarkable, and I just want to make sure that, that we echo all those sentiments to everybody that's been involved. First responders and everybody else, EPB and Power Company, Gas Company, I mean, every, everybody that has been a part of this, we cannot thank you enough, uh, for helping our, our community get back together as quickly as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Well, well said, sir. Thank you. Well, well said, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Burres.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to add to that, the people, uh, very quietly yesterday, I was going through District Six, which also was hit not quite as dramatically. Thank God. Uh, and the people were wonderful. They were, they were helping each other. They were waving and smiling. Uh, they were saying, as we went around asking, do you need anything? Do you need help? They said, no, we're good. We'll, we'll help each other. We took food around and they said, thank you so much. But everyone was very, very gracious. All of their concerns were toward District Four. Part of District Six goes across the freeway and what would think was, uh, what would think is District Four. Uh, and all, all across, people with, with trees smashing parts of their houses. Thank God, there were no fatalities, but yet there was this feeling of, of joy of being alive and this feeling of being grateful and not one complaint, not one complaint. So to the people, thank you very, very much. You're just as great as we all think you are. The other thing I want to say thanks is, uh, Silverdale. Silverdale, uh, church has reached out. It's, it's part of our district and you guys have always been outstanding. You've been leaders in the community as far as social action is concerned as well. Thank you for letting us, uh, use you as a command post. Thank you for reaching out. You're truly a community church and I, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, these people aren't real dramatic. They're neighbors, they're friends, and they're quietly and graciously and with dignity helping solve their problems. So thanks to every one of you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman Bird.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Real quick, uh, just want to commend and thank everyone, uh, all my fellow colleagues on this, uh, council. So many times you, I, I, when we first started, I asked, I feel like we're not doing enough. I feel like we as a council can just do so much more. And, uh, from time to time, I'm brung to the realization that this body certain powers that, that, that are not bestowed upon us, certain powers we do not have. We want to do things. We want to help. And I know we have some very intelligent people, uh, that sit on this council. And I know you, you call your friends and other higher office and you call and try to, uh, connect with people that you have relationships with and try to, uh, suggest or even give the, the, the charge to say, hey, let's do this or see if you can make this happen. And I just commend you all because, uh, before I was a councilman, I knew you guys had some great hearts and just to work with you, to see the hearts and the compassion that you have for people, I see why you were elected into office. And, uh, I see now that the power, no matter what we say or what we do in these government official jobs, the power lays, lies in the hands of the people. So reach out to your neighbors, reach out to your fellow friends. Uh, if you have a little extra gift to them, and we're just in some troubling times right now. And it's just an honor to work with you guys. And I just appreciate the heart and the love that you have for Chattanooga. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilman Ledford, I certainly want you to know that you have the support of this council, that East Brainerd area has the support of this council. And I was able to witness, uh, the early response of our first responders and by our public works team. And let me just say that, um, when it comes to budget time, training is priceless. Uh, what I saw out there on the ground by our, uh, Chattanooga Police Department and by our Chattanooga Fire Department, uh, was, was incredible. Uh, the command center ran very effectively and efficiently. That doesn't happen by accident and the training was evident. Uh, and I think when it comes to budget time, we did the, we need to remember that. And also to our public works team, they were doing an incredible job themselves, clearing the debris from the roads. Uh, Justin Holling and his team is to be commended.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman.
At this time, we'll go on to committee reports. Um, I see, let's start, since we're not going around the, the day, uh, Councilman Burres.
No reports, sir.
Uh, let's see, I think Councilman Bird.
No reports, sir.
Councilman Gilbert.
No report.
Uh, Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to remind everybody, we're going to have a special planning and zoning committee meeting on April 28th.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a public works and transportation committee meeting today and good Lord willing, uh, we will try again in a couple of weeks.
Councilman Oglesby, do you have any committee report?
No report at this time, sir.
It'll be coming. Uh, I would like to, uh, announce that I will be making committee, uh, chair announcements at our next week's meeting. I'll be contacting each of you to make sure you're pleasantly okay with, with, with the, uh, appointments. Uh, at this time, we would like to go to persons wishing to address the council. Councilman Smith, do we have any of the attendees that have registered that have their hand up to address the council at this time?
We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Your Vice Chair.
All right. He muted me. All right. Um, sorry. Ms. Mott is the only one that is registered to speak at this time, sir.
Okay. I do not see her hand, Ms. Mott, if you would like to speak.
I've, I've got her. I've got her here, sir.
You've, okay. All right. If you let her join the meeting. Ms. Mott?
Hello?
Uh, Ms. Mott, you're, you're with us, you're with the city council. Go ahead.
Do you mind putting up the time for me, please?
Working on it.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Councilwoman Marie Mott from Oak Grove. Um, I also want to say thank you to our first responders as well as, um, our city employees who are on the front lines. Uh, they are the life force of making everything possible in our city. And I would like to second that of Councilman Henderson. Um, I believe that thank yous cannot just be soundbites. Uh, my grandmother had a simple philosophy. You give people their flowers while they're still alive so they can smell them and enjoy them. Um, I think it's time for this city to raise our city, uh, workers up to a livable wage. And that is how you tangibly thank them for always being on the front lines, not only when we don't need them, but when we do. Um, I also would like to, um, ask of this council, as we move forward with the community who is ready and willing, I being one of those individuals who can't wait to help out with the efforts in other districts, because I have people that I love that are, uh, residents in this affected area. Um, I really believe that the city needs to ensure that it, that there are PPE equipment in the form of masks and gloves that will be made available to individuals who want to volunteer in conjunction with the city government. Um, we are dealing with two very delicate, uh, issues at once. That is, how do we respond to the people who have needs in our communities and at the same time, ensure that we are slowing the spread of the coronavirus? I think it would be a grave mistake if we don't take that into account and we serve the people right now as we are supposed to. But we get to the other side of this of sort of leveling out, uh, what the community needs. And then we have exposed a tremendous amount of our first responders, um, and vital city employees to the coronavirus. Um, so I really want to elevate that because I don't want that to get drowned out in the tornado response, uh, that we are still in the middle of a viral outbreak and pandemic. So I, I also recommend that our city employees should be tested for coronavirus after, uh, we finish the next stages of rebuilding our communities, make sure that they are safe. Um, and that's just my recommendations. I am praying for each and every one of you as leaders. I just want to close out with my time in quoting Dr. Martin Luther King, who has lifted me up in this hour, and I hope he lifts you up even from the grave. But I know somehow that only when it is dark enough can you see the stars. Be encouraged. I love you all and it's nothing you can do about it.
Thank you, Ms. Mott.
Welcome.
Vice Chair Smith, is there any other attendees that have registered to speak at public, uh, comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Saying there are no other attendees wishing to speak, is there any other comments from the council? If not, at this time, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.